We'll call the regular meeting, the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have the reading of the minutes of the September 5th, 2013 Upshur County Commission meeting. Morning Jackie.
Morning.
Morning Jackie.
Morning. The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the courthouse annex on Thursday, September 5, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tenney called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tenney Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Palmeroy County Administrator, Jennifer Dinkalo, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenney, oh, I'm sorry, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, excuse me, that's an error, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of August 29, 2013 with typographical corrections. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the resignation of Stacy Truman as Community Corrections Case Manager, effective September 13, 2013. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the promotion of Melanie Edman from part-time to full-time Community Corrections Case Manager, effective September 9, 2013, at the rate of $10.80 per hour. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the resignation of Gloria Burr as part-time E-911 Communications Center Dispatcher, effective August 25, 2013. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the promotion of Jody Martin from part-time to full-time E-911 Communications Center Dispatcher, effective September 8, 2013, at the rate of $10.29 per hour. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the employment of Christie Riffle as part-time personnel, nineteen and a half hours per week average, for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility as recommended by Jan Cochran and Megan Palmeroy. Effective date of employment is September 8, 2013, at the rate of $8 per hour. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of correspondence from the Fred Brooks Garden Club, requesting approval to use the courthouse plaza for the dedication of the Blue Star by Wayne Marker on the Upshur County Courthouse wall on Wednesday, September 11, 2013. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the request. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved Brenda J. Lee as volunteer for the Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility. Stacy Saunders and representatives of Hall Neighbors House appeared before the commission and Ms. Saunders read the Recovery Month 2013 proclamation. The purpose of the proclamation is to promote community observation and participation in programs, activities, and meetings for the prevention of mental and/or substance use disorders. After discussion on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the commission to sign the Recovery Month 2013 proclamation. Opportunity House Director Matthew A. Kerner appeared before the commission and provided information concerning services provided by the organization. That was not on the agenda, this is the report only. After discussion on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the West Virginia Development Office Community Participation Grant 13 LEDA 0713 and all related documents. The grant, in the amount of $8,000, is for the benefit of the Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 36, for the purpose of building upgrades. Donnie Tenney reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, monthly building permit report, August 2013. Number two, Upshur County OEM announcement regarding potable water supply exercise. Number three, agendas and/or notices of meetings as listed. Number four, meeting minutes and/or financial reports, none. Number four, meetings as listed. And number six, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. Jen Cochran, Lewis Upshur Animal Control Facility Director, appeared before the commission and provided an update on recent and upcoming adoption and fundraising events, and expressed appreciation for volunteer assistance and community donations. Ms. Cochran also provided a status report on facility activities and upgrades, and advised that security cameras have been ordered and will be installed within the next few weeks. Ms. Cochran provided data concerning adoptions and rescues. Representatives from the American Legion, Frank B. Bartlett Post 7, appeared before the commission and provided a review of legislation that has been approved by the West Virginia Legislature to mandate a class on patriotism for the curriculum for grades 6 through 12 in all West Virginia schools. Post Commander Leslie Shreve and Americanism Chairman Peggy Shreve and Robert Post presented the Patriotism CD, and Lester Shreve read the Resolution on Patriotism to ensure that love of country will not be a forgotten legacy. The commission reassessed at 10:25 a.m. The commission reconvened at 10:30 a.m. At 10:30 a.m., Steve Linger, E-991 Communications Center Director, appeared before the commission and requested an executive session meeting for West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to discuss E-911 personnel issues concerning Kelly S. Babbitt, E-911 dispatcher. On motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission entered executive session. Present were Donnie Tenney, J.C. Rafferty, Troy Brady, Megan Palmeroy, Jennifer Dinkalo, Steve Linger, and Prosecuting Attorney Jacob Rigger. Ms. Dinkalo exited the meeting at 11:20 a.m. Mr. Rigger exited the meeting at 11:25 a.m. Ms. Babbitt entered the meeting at 11:25 a.m. and then exited the meeting at 12:10 p.m. Ms. Babbitt returned to the meeting at 12:20 p.m. The commission returned to open session at 12:22 p.m. No decisions were made in executive session. Megan Palmeroy reviewed a letter of resignation from Kelly Babbitt. On motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the resignation of Kelly Babbitt. The commission reassessed at 12:25 p.m. The commission reconvened at 1:00 p.m. Troy Brady left the meeting at 12:25 p.m. The agenda item scheduled at 1:00 p.m. was delayed until 1:55 p.m. due to a scheduling conflict. City of Buchanan Mayor Kenneth Davidson and Rich Clemmons appeared before the commission, requested an executive session meeting per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to discuss personnel issues. On motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Donnie Tenney, the commission entered executive session at 1:30 p.m. Present were Donnie Tenney, J.C. Rafferty, Megan Palmeroy, Jennifer Dinkalo, Kenneth Davidson, and Rich Clemmons. The commission returned to open session at 1:55 p.m. No decisions were made in executive session. That was not on the agenda, this is the report only. At 1:55 p.m., Steve Linger, E-911 Communications Center Director, appeared before the commission and requested an executive session meeting per West Virginia Code 6-9A-4 to discuss E-911 personnel issues concerning Joyce Wall, E-911 dispatcher. On motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Donnie Tenney, the commission entered executive session. Present were Donnie Tenney, J.C. Rafferty, Megan Palmeroy, Jennifer Dinkalo, Steve Linger, and Prosecuting Attorney Jacob Rigger. Mr. Rigger exited the meeting at 2:10 p.m. Ms. Wall entered the meeting at 2:10 p.m. and then exited the meeting at 2:15 p.m. Ms. Wall returned to the meeting at 2:30 p.m. The commission returned to open session at 2:32 p.m. No decisions were made in executive session. Megan Palmeroy reviewed a letter of resignation from Joyce Wall. On motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Donnie Tenney, the commission approved the resignation of Joyce Wall. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. The commission approved the following request for time out of office for commission employees as listed. The commission approved the following consolidation of land tracts as listed. With no further business on motion, and this is a typo, J.C. Rafferty was the one that seconded, I'm sorry, a motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Donnie Tenney. The commission meeting adjourned at 3:15 p.m.
Okay, other than those corrections, are there any others?
I think on the third page, it just says Lester Shreve instead of Leslie in one spot.
Oh. Yeah, okay.
At the very end of that, it says, "No further business on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by Donnie Tenney. At 3:15 p.m. I wasn't here," as you're aware of.
Right. And that is a correction.
Send that to J.C. Okay. Apart from all that, maybe we have a motion, do we approve the minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as read?
Make that motion.
I don't know whether I can second that, because I wasn't here for the afternoon.
Well, I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you Jackie.
Thank you Jackie.
Okay, our first scheduled appointments at 1:00 o'clock, our supervisor's meeting, 2:00 on the board, but we have some folks with us this morning from up in Tannerton. And we have a continuing dog issue up there, so I'm gonna ask Mike Miller, if you'll come up, Mike, explain the situation and see if we can get some resolve for these folks and take care of their problem for them.
Okay, the ongoing issue is with a dog owned by Dwayne Lipscomb. I don't remember the date, but back earlier in the year.
April 22nd.
April 22nd.
That's when the thing was signed.
Okay. Entered into a contract with them. They were to keep the dog in question, which was a, under a year old, red Doberman male. They were to keep the dog contained to their property, except when himself or someone else that was capable of handling the dog was walking it. I'd received calls after the fact from the residents up at Jack Lane that the dog, basically immediately after we were here for the meeting and he was here for his meeting, had continued to let the dog run free. Well, in knowing how this case was going back and forth, it was told to the residents by myself and the commissioners at the meeting that if, if this continued, that we needed video or picture proof, so that it wouldn't be a he said, she said situation, because he claims that they don't like him and they want him out of there, but anyway. Until yesterday, I was unaware that any pictures existed to this point. I had, I had met with Andy a while back and told them that we needed to get that video or picture evidence so we could proceed and do something about it, and he said that he would, and, and I just assumed that he would pass it on to the neighborhood, and he did. And then I got a call from him and his wife yesterday stating that there was an issue I needed to come up there and take care of with the dog, and in going up there, I was informed that that very morning at what time, 9:00, 9:30? Andy went to leave his house and he went to step off his porch and there was the dog taking a, if I may say so, a crap on his concrete stoop, and the dog saw him and immediately took off, so I have, I have a picture of that evidence, not the dog, but he then informed me that the neighbors did have pictures, but they weren't home at the time, so they, I said, you know, I talked to Megan, and she said that they could come to the meeting this morning, and I informed him to bring whatever pictures they had, and then with that evidence, if, if they are dated, if the pictures are dated, have a date when they took them, then we can proceed with doing something about the dog, which will first entail me talking with Kelly Cunningham to see exactly what we want to proceed with on it.
So, did you all bring pictures this morning?
There's a question, Donnie. They want to know if they present these pictures, is there any liability in presenting the pictures to the...
They, they are concerned, they asked me that, are they liable for taking pictures of this dog?
There's no expectation of privacy if there is a person, or an animal, I presume, but persons can, if they're in the public, they're in the public domain, there is no liability, if no expectation of privacy exists.
All right, thank you. Because I had the feeling, if I get sued over this, the President there, he said, get pictures, and the dog catcher said, get pictures, I told them, if I get sued, you fitters are gonna be guilty too.
Right. Well, I don't think there's any issue.
I don't either.
It will not be an issue legally.
Basically, if you're on your own property and you're not trespassing or whatever, you can take pictures of anything that you want to.
Or if you're in a public area.
Or a public area. As long as you're not trespassing on somebody else's property, get them pictures, you can take pictures of anything you want to.
Okay, so, so have you given the pictures to Megan or Mike that you brought with you?
I haven't yet.
Okay.
As to that question, did you ever ask them if that dog had been off of the property after you told them not to have it on there?
No. No, because I knew what answer I was gonna get. They would deny it, and it would be, you know, like your word against theirs. That's why I said, we need pictures. We need evidence showing, so they can't, they can't deny the fact that it happened, because there we have it.
I just got the one picture of her standing there at her driveway. That was actually, so we had an leash. He was on leash, we should stand there watching him go over to neighbor's yard, and lay down a foul ankle, you see. And we got pictures, two different days later, that the dog come right back, which, they have a bathroom, they, you see the neighbors, nothing to do.
Yeah.
Right to the same place.
In the going on somebody else's property and using the bathroom, that's more of a liability issue, where if you wanted to press charges of them for damages, you could. My main objective is keeping the dog secure on their property, so that it doesn't hurt, scare, or whatever, any, any person up there.
Well, they, when it was on the leash, a few days it was on the leash, they had it on real long leash, and this lady, she's afraid of him, she won't say no, but they throw the big leash out, it goes behind her house, does its job, and then bring it back home, they know what they're cleaning after their ass.
And it'll come right out in the road on that leash, and to the middle of the road up there. That's containment on their property, I guess, the government, street here.
They had that, just wanted to put the garbage out, to scare him, come out half way on the road, when you, you know, when you put the garbage out.
Well, the road's not their property. The road, the road is county neutral property, right?
Well, if you have, if you have pictures that are dated, are your pictures dated?
I don't have a camera's date, so I had to write my date on, but I don't...
And that won't, that won't work. I wouldn't see where that would stand up.
I believe that will work.
You believe that would stand up?
If she took a picture and somebody was where, threw y'all a name, and wrote down the date on that picture, it's not as good as having a camera with the date and the time on it, naturally. But, y'all mean, I think that will work, you can check with...
She's certified that that was the time and date, and I think that would be sufficient for our purposes, anyway.
Yes.
Lieutenant Davis told you?
No.
Who shot it, felt this morning, or yesterday? And had him here, I showed him the pictures, and he said, might have gotten him, shouldn't have put it like that. The way the dog hit the dirt, he said he would talk to you.
Well, if we have the pictures, then let's, let's go ahead and proceed through the
process and, and we'll make a determination. It seems as though they'll work if you have verification from other parties that the date is correct and when they were taken. So, what we'll do is, if you give the pictures to Mike, and then he can start the process talking to our Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, and we'll start that process, and now, one other question here before we let you folks leave, was there a problem with another dog or is this the main problem? The dog?
There's two or three other dogs, they got two little dogs. And he be driving up the road, and he'll standing there watching, I'm talking about the...
Little or dog?
No, I'm talking about the dog owner.
Oh, okay.
He will not make the dog, excuse me, he will not make the dogs eat out of the road. So, I stood there, the other day, he stood there, puts the dogs in the road, and him, he will not get the dogs cleared out of the road, so I make my mind up, get on, make the wheels, and my, I do, I try to be good to the neighbors, they said it would mean similarly, there's been many a time when I could have called the animal control man, and I have not, but when he stopped yesterday morning, he left a hot calling card on my porch, that was the event, I'm not going to count it back.
Do you have a picture of that, Andy?
I do.
Mike, is there anything else, Megan, that's...
Have the dog in too?
No. No, just a pile.
I think if you get the pictures to Mike, let him take it from here, because, I mean, we just heard about it yesterday, so he can...
Now, what's involved in this, before I give up the pictures, what do we have to go through?
You don't have to go through.
Here's what you would have to go through. If you give the pictures to Mike, and you all want something done, he'll need the pictures to start the process. Once he gets the pictures, he'll go down and see Kelly Cunningham, the Assistant Prosecuting Attorney, to see what charges he can do to get this dog taken care of and the problem. If, in fact, there's an issue and he gets charged with something, you all could appear in court, y'all mean, which states your name, is this a picture you took? Is this a picture you took on such and such a day? Yes, it is. Have you had problems with this dog before? Yes, I have. Have you, just basically questions, that's all that's involved. But to do anything, y'all mean, we have to have the pictures. You have to be willing to get involved. If you're not willing to get involved, then our hands is a little bit tied, because if you don't have any statements, no evidence or whatever, he's already tried to talk to him before, which didn't work, y'all mean, so to have any case, you have to have somebody willing to get involved, stand up and state what the truth is.
And are you willing to do that? I've been hearing that everybody's scared of him, and the other neighbor on the opposite side is, I heard, was terrified of him, that he would do something to her, and...
You're talking about the owner, not the dog.
Yeah.
Well, we've been here quite a lot since we've lived up there, our bench has been getting on the driveway, somebody had chains on them, they tore up the blacktop, and then he towed the blacktop, so it's hard to tell if what'll happen, but, see, this is them. We've put up with stuff up there for years, but if you speak up, that's where you at.
The only way to stop a problem is to get involved. A lot of people doesn't want to get involved. I mean, I've handled several cases, y'all mean, on domestics, where the man's hit the woman or whatever, and the woman doesn't want to press a charges or whatever, y'all mean, if we don't have a person willing to get involved, come to court and testify on them pictures or whatever, our hands is pretty well tied, because we can't enforce anything unless somebody wants to get involved. I mean, you can call him, which you have done previously. Mike has went out and has talked to him, hoping that would take care of it, y'all mean, that it wouldn't lead to him bending the leash, y'all mean, but that hasn't worked.
And that's been documented, that is documented, that's on official record.
And I've, I've made several drive-throughs there, and just following up, checking, and it seems like every time I've ever up there, the dog is either tied up, or I don't see him.
The dogs are down there when we come.
The one dog in question was tied up in the front yard, a couple different times that I was up there.
Well, if you have the pictures and you're willing to give those to Mike, then we can proceed. I mean, if you want to, if you want to solve the problem, this is the course of action we'll need to take.
Well, first, I want to show you the mailbag.
The mail lady gave a permission to venture her.
But now, you can see that the dog gets up there, he bashes the tires, and here they are, and you talk about us going out and getting our mail, well, you have to take some, a buck to even back off of it. We never complain about the little ones, because we take a stick and get them out of the way, but the big dog, with his legs and stuff, and him letting loose, that's what worries me. I mean, the mailbox is clear up from the other side of the driveway, with town things, well, just sure as you get out there, you're in town, and we're right there across, he's in our driveway, everybody can see this, um, there he is.
Well, that should be enough proof to get the ball rolling, so we'll, Mike can, Mike can try to get with Kelly today, hopefully, and get things started, so that we'll get you folks some relief.
But, I mean, we're not mad at them, we just don't bother, you know, we don't want to bother neighbors and stuff like that, and we don't bother, we don't go down and bother. And why they want to put the dogs out there, why can't you walk next door, check on sure about it? It's getting places, we're gonna have to drive out in the park and get the mail.
Well, you shouldn't have to live that way, and that's, sometimes you just have to go through the law to, to settle issues like this. It's a shame that happens, but that's, that's the way it happens sometimes, and that's why we have the law to mediate those. So, so Mike, we'll, we'll charge you with starting your process of helping these folks take care of their, their problem up there, since you've got the pictures now. And we thank you all for coming in, and hopefully, we'll get through this process, it'll resolve the issue.
One, one question for you, Mike, before you leave, you looked at the pictures and we have not. Does a picture verify enough for you to do something with this?
Yeah, verifies that the dog is loose.
Good enough?
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hopefully, the problem gets taken care of. Thanks, Mike.
Would you all like to see him?
No.
If necessary.
No, that's good. Thank you.
Would you all just give us some answers, some kind of what you...
It's going to be a little bit, because I hope we get to talk to Kelly today, because she's busy, this is her Tuesdays and Thursdays, and it's her court days, so, you all need one minute.
Mike, will you, will you keep them apprised of the progress that you got?
Well, he'll probably have to come back if they proceed, and Kelly will probably say, well, we just like to have written statements, we know you did the pictures, but you need to go back and say, is this a picture, y'all mean? So, he'll be stopping by your house, y'all mean, probably taking one line or two lines of statements if they go ahead and proceed.
Well, if I might make one suggestion, and I know that these folks have probably thought of it already, but an inexpensive way to also help solve this problem is a video camera. You had a video camera, let's just say you walked into yourself to the mailbox, and they have this picture of this dog coming at you, or you're just out there and you see this dog going along, that will go a long way, and there's a lot of citizens that are using video cameras now to solve a lot of these issues. It may also help, if he sees you out there videotaping, he knows you did records of what's going on, he may also try a little bit harder to make sure that he knows. He may also try a little bit harder to make sure that he doesn't upset you guys, because you already have. Just a suggestion, it really does help. And it's really inexpensive, about $50 for just a cheap video camera, but it may help solve a lot of your problems if you don't have the evidence you're looking for.
And that's what I had suggested, video or picture evidence, and none of them are video cameras.
We had one where children, the little one, and our, our children, takes care of all of them. And we don't...
What am I used for?
Well, I think, I think these pictures, I think these pictures will suffice for that part.
And I suggested to Andy about getting what would even work, could do, to maybe do what you said, if he, if he saw visible evidence, you know, is to put a trail camera up. And if he saw it, he knew, he would know, hey, I bear a towed line, but it's kind of past that now.
Yeah.
You know, if something's going to be done, he's going to be, you know, be excited. Don't know if Kelly will see that it's a severe enough thing to take the dog away from him, but they will be put on notice again for the last time, that if it happens again, then, then we'll report.
Well, if the dog, I mean, if, if he, he says he'll put it out, but it might be up maybe three days a week and then he's going to...
Well, you know, it won't be now. If it, if it would happen again after this notice served and he's cited or whatever, then he would, he would be grounds to be giving the dog up.
And now Mrs. Paltz has pictures, too.
And she's not here, right?
No, she had to go to the vine.
Okay. You said you'd give that for me, right?
Instead of, instead of speculating what might happen, let's start the process and see, because this may take care of the problem. Thank you.
And Rick is right, video camera is great, but I think at this point, I don't know whether I would buy one now, y'all may, to wait and see what transpires here. Jerry, do you have something you need to say?
I've got a trail camera. There's probably a lot of people that do have that with a loan of a camera.
Well, if we, right, if we need, if we need that, I think the county may even have one. So we'll see how this prob, hopefully this will take care of it. If not, we'll, we'll work with you and help you.
Well, I hate to go buy one, we don't...
Well, yeah, that's right. That's right.
Yeah. I wouldn't, I wouldn't do that either.
Right. If we need further evidence, we'll help you with it.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Again, take care.
Better get you through this.
Yeah, I need to get out of here.
Okay, okay, so we have some items for discussion and possible action and approval?
Something will be done.
The first item is approve resignation of tax deputy Haley Hitt, effective September 18, 2013, approval of advertisements for full-time tax deputy personnel. And is there anything we need to elaborate on that? She just decided that she was going to move on to other things. So we have a motion to approve these, this resignation and approval for advertisements?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye. No, same sign, motion carried. Next item is, yeah, last week we had been asked for approval of letters of support for the opportunity house grant application, and we have those drafted.
Yes, you have two letters here for two separate grants. The first one for the substance abuse, or substance use recovery residence. Matt indicated that they have never operated on federal funding before. They've never had any assistance that way. So this grant will allow for consistent housing, consistent support, monetary support, allow them to physically upgrade the house, provide 24-hour staff, that type of thing. The second grant there, the PATH grant, the projects for assistance in transition from homelessness, will pay for one job to be an outreach coordinator who will work with homeless individuals, kind of be a case manager until they're able to find housing for that person. So they're both for support positions within the organization.
That'll be grant money coming in.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion to authorize and sign these two grant, these letters of support for these two grant applications?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, same sign, motion carries. Next item, review and approval of American Fidelity Assurance Company Optional Mid-Year Election Amendment.
And this is optional, but it's a mid-year election amendment. It's for our 125 plan. Generally, you can't make changes to your plan in mid-year, you have to have a qualifying event. Because of the healthcare reform, they're making this available so that people will have the ability to switch on January 1, I believe.
Make changes. Okay, so that just gives people an extra opportunity to make changes. We have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, same sign, motion carries. Review and approve PTS Solutions Annual Maintenance Agreement for $700 a year, effective September 15, 2013, on pages six and seven.
Yeah, and this is for software in the sheriff's department. Maybe you can help me with this immediate incidents reporting. I believe it's a software system that they use. I, the sheriff indicated that he thinks that this is one that we share with, we pay half and they pay half, I believe, for this computer software.
Okay. And this is a continuing support for that software?
Correct, yeah, just an annual maintenance agreement.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, same sign, motion carries. Next item is review and authorize advertisement for E-91 dispatch personnel on page eight.
And this is to replace some personnel that have left. We, I think we already had one position that was available. We have a couple of part-time that are available now that we've moved one to full-time, so just approval of the advertisement.
You know what our staffing level is? How, how many we're down now?
I checked with our bookkeeper and she says that it, I think there's one full-time and two part-time that are available right now. So we would be advertising and see what we can get in for part-time. If there's anybody that already has training that would be available for a full-time position, that is open right now.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion to approve, authorize the advertisement?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
No, same sign, motion carries. Approval of Lewis County Animal Control Facility volunteers Cassandra Della Fortuna and Chavvia Dickerson.
Chavvia.
Chavvia.
One is a Wesleyan student, I think the other one is, just wants to be long here.
Oh, okay. So, so they, have they filled out all the paperwork?
Yes, they do have all, all their required paperwork.
Oh, good. So do we have a motion to approve these two individuals?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. How many on that topic? You know what our number is now of approved volunteers?
Um, no, I can check and have that for next week, though.
Okay. It seems like we just...
A pretty good number, yeah.
Yeah, so that's good.
Are these students at Wesleyan? I couldn't...
One of them is a student, I believe, at Wesleyan, the other is not.
It is nice to have volunteers.
It's wonderful.
We appreciate it.
They help a lot.
Okay, and we have our Uptown County Dog Warden Report on page nine. Do you have any questions on that?
I have a question.
Right ahead.
Does the dog warden also catch cats?
No. No. The city has a cat catcher, if you're in the city, but in the county...
What about, somebody has a buck-bellied pig, a hog, or whatever you want to call it, do they have to pay taxes on that animal?
Dogs, dogs are anything that's taxed. Well...
And goats.
And goats?
Well, we have a, we have a fee down in the assessor's office for goats, but not cats, yeah.
I know where you're coming from, Jerry. Good luck with it.
Sound me like a good...
Try and react like him. On your two requests with the Bureau of Behavioral Health, I think one of his last names was spelled on there, too. They just, they still have three. Brady's, the ERA he did use on?
It does look like it's a little...
That's how it's spelled in the old country. They drop on the D's when it came out.
Thanks, Ed.
Where is it?
Here.
No, I didn't know they had to pay taxes on the hog or not.
Now, you know, something, something, of course, it would be, probably be very controversial, but you know, is when you consider the amount of tax dollars that we have to spend to support the animal control facility, because the only source of funding is your dog tax fund, which is pretty minimal, and so we, we've put several hundred thousand dollars into the, and, and we're fortunate that we're able to split the costs with Lewis County, because a lot of counties have to pay the, the whole bill themselves. And also, the city's helped some since, since we've gotten involved in the cat situation. And there's been some, there's been some talk of raising the, because it's, what is it for dogs now? $5? I just paid for...
I believe for the county, it's $3.
$3, $3.05 in the city. I think personally that dogs ought to be $25 and the cats ought to be taxed. But I know it's not going to happen this year because it would have to be approved by the legislature, and they're not going to approve any kind of a pay raise, any kind of a tax increase. Nothing is going to be approved this year in the legislature. I can guarantee you that because of the dynamics of the face of the House.
They really accept cats at the MMA society, is that correct?
That's correct. You have to drop them off.
They are allowed?
I wouldn't go quite that far.
Well, if there's no one there, I'd say yes. But anyway, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a problem. And there again, the purpose of government is to basically to take care of the issues of people that don't want to take care of the issues they should be. And the government, the purpose of taxation is supposedly that the government can do what individually can't do, whether it's protection or whether it's, you know, the rights of everybody or taking care of issues like we dealt with this morning. So that otherwise, you've got all kinds of issues if it becomes vigilante opportunities. So, all right, so we have our 911 Communication Center reports. We have our UCDA Executive Committee Notice of Meetings. And a notice of long list of, of meetings of different organizations.
Excuse me.
Megan, do you have anything else?
I do not.
You don't have anything?
No.
Rick?
Yes, sir, I have a question regarding the Executive Committee of the Development Authority. Were any of you guys in attendance? I know Megan and I think she's sitting on there.
I was not due to illness on that particular meeting, but I normally attend.
I'm just curious, I know that the Uptown County Parks and Light Board haven't met in a few months now, but I noticed off their minutes, the recreation topic from Mr. Lunt. I'm just wondering, was there any updates to that? Or perhaps the decisions are with that?
Are you talking about the one yesterday? I did not attend the one yesterday.
No. So we just had a point for the minutes, so...
You could probably call Steve Foster and ask him.
Very well, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Okay, well, we will, we'll check if we have bills, if I have.